All right, perfect. Thank you, Brian. All right, welcome to the order selected meeting for Tuesday, June eighth, two thousand twenty-one. This evening, we just have one scheduled items as we're going to call it round two of the Tuxbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee interviews. So without further ado, why don't we jump in and just for the applicants, we just first and foremost, on behalf of the board, we want to certainly thank you for applying and wanting to volunteer on this committee. I can tell you, just like the first round of interviews last week, what an impressive group, both on paper and through the interviews, and I'm pretty certain this is going to be the same based on the applicants and the resumes sent in. So typically, we're just going to ask three. You know, I want you to be very relaxed and very comfortable. We don't bite, we promise. So very relaxed atmosphere. We ask kind of three. We're going to call them standard questions. I think you'll get the gist right after we go through the first interviewee. And again, just very easy, open format. We don't want you to be nervous at all. Okay, without further ado, I'm actually looking. Why don't we just jump in? And sometimes the candidates will spend a couple of minutes on a question. Sometimes they'll spend five minutes, ten minutes. So you kind of have the floor, but sometimes it's a very short question and sometimes candidates go on. So we don't have any, you don't have to spend two minutes or ten minutes. However you want to answer the questions is absolutely fine with us. Fair enough?
Absolutely.
All right, perfect. All right, why don't we jump in? So we have, and again, no random order here, a random order. So we have a seven o'clock appointment. Is it Merlin?
It is.
All right, so you're up first. So I'll just, I'll pass it to my board. How about maybe Ms. Wellman? You want to kick it off with the first question?
Yes, that would be great. Hi Merlin, it's nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Can you tell us a little bit about your background and what you would like to do with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, what you're excited about? So the background and then what you want to do.
So background professionally, socially, just well-rounded, all of it?
Yeah, I mean, as you think it might relate, you know.
Yeah, totally. So I've lived in Tuxbury now for fifteen years. I'm actually from Medford, Massachusetts. And I work in healthcare. I've been in healthcare now for thirty years. I know it's hard to believe. But I've been in healthcare for thirty years. I have two girls. My husband's a nurse at Lowell General Hospital. And one of the reasons, I've always been interested in community work. I have an older brother that's actually autistic. And I have two parents that immigrated from Haiti here, and it was really hard to set up programs. So I really grew up in an advocacy environment. My mother sat on the Autism Society of America. My dad and I were board people over at the E-Mark, which is the Eastern Middlesex Association for Retarded Citizens. And through my girls, I've made a huge connection in the town of Tuxbury. We recently built a house. I got to meet a lot of builders. I started getting involved in those meetings. And this particular one really spoke to me. I saw the post on Facebook. Full disclosure, Jane's been after me about getting into some community work. We've met through the dance community as well. So again, this really spoke to me, and I look forward to working with a diverse group of people, really trying to bring Tuxbury. You know, it has a nice small-town feel, but how do you branch out and make it feel a little more welcoming? What's the vision? How do we include historical and bring in the future state for this town?
Good. Thank you.
Very good. How about Ms. Tronick?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Thank you for coming. That was very good. I appreciate that background. Could you please tell me, do you have any familiarity with the open meeting law?
I actually had to look it up. I thought I knew what it meant, but I needed to understand it. And you know, when you read a definition as opposed to what you theoretically think it is? So I'll give it my best shot, and hopefully you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. But it's, and I'm just going to use layman's terms, a town meeting that affords the opportunity for the community to be involved to a certain degree, correct?
That's great. And just so, it's excellent. And just so you know, if you don't have experience, and that's okay, because we can bring you right up to speed. We're just, it's an important part of what committee members do. So we want to make sure that our committee members have a good understanding of what it is, because we have to be very careful as committee members not to break that trust and keep that transparency to our community. So that's why we ask a question. Did I do you justice, Mr. Chairman, in terms of?
I know. That's usually my question. I usually get the layoffs. But for like on a serious note, we, for on in all book committees, we always address the open meeting laws. And there's a neat little loud video. I think it's like two to five minutes, so we'll definitely catch up to speed. And the big thing to Ms. Tronick's point is like, with all of like social media now and everything, you know, we just always have to be careful that we meet as a quorum and everything is a public forum, very much just like this meeting. So that's the gist of it. And again, that's why we asked the question, because we just always want to be careful about open meeting laws for Massachusetts, for the state. So how about Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully you can hear me. I think you can. Just to tag on to that, right, open meeting law, right, that governs the actions of any public committee, right? So we have to do the work of the committee in a public forum. And that's really the underlying principle. So we're not expecting everyone to understand that fully. But if you get engaged in this committee, it's something that you will need to be more familiar with. So take the time and do a little bit of research along the way. So I just offer that comment for everyone's benefit. It is something that we want to be very cognizant of. So I can't, I'm missing my list of questions, so I need some help from a friend. Can I tag in? Have a tag in from, we have three questions.
Yeah, I'll take, sure, I'll take the next one. It's just about, it's about time. Like, we always ask folks about the commitment, because sometimes we get folks on boards and, oh, go ahead, Mr. Johnson. You know, you know the drill.
No, thank you for the reminder. I feel like, what was it, Regis Philbin? I needed to phone a friend there. Yeah, so the other question really, Merlin, is about, you know, your ability to meet. This is a committee where everyone presumably has, you know, daytime commitments. So this is a nighttime type of opportunity. It might, you know, potentially maybe a Saturday morning or something on occasion. But it really comes down to just assuring us and certainly checking the box for yourself that, you know, are you flexible and willing to work within those environments? Do you have any restrictions that might, you know, impede your ability to be active on the committee?
Not that I'm aware of. The only thing I can tell you is I was, I just got a letter last week. I was accepted to law school. So I will be starting school in September.
Good for you. Where?
Massachusetts School of Law. It's in Andover. It's close. I think I'll be going two nights a week. But I can avail myself, you know, like anything, if I put my heart to it and I make the commitment, I make it happen.
All right, well, God bless. I did four years, four nights a week, so.
Four nights?
Yep. So good luck. God bless.
I know who to call for help.
Yes.
You can be my phone friend.
Feel free. There you go. Good for you. Thank you for that, and congratulations on that.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Merlin, any questions? Any questions for the board? Do you have any questions?
No, other than, you know, I know this is a new committee. What types of, like, what's an attribute that you think is important for a committee member to have?
Everything, everything you just said in the last ten minutes, pretty much, but. No, you gave good responses. And this is where I typically defer, maybe for Ms. Wellman, just to kind of a high level, because I'm sure folks might have the same question, but you did a very good job last week. Kind of just a high-level overview and maybe hit to Merlin's question.
Sure. So we're not checking any boxes with the membership of the committee. We are looking for a diverse committee, diversity of experience, of race, ethnicity, you know, background, income, religion, things like that. But we're, you know, there are some groups that won't be able to be represented because we can't fill all the seats that we want to. We had sixteen applications for this committee, which is huge amount of interest compared to other committees we typically have. And so it's going to be really hard. The, I think every single person in the last group said, even if they're not selected, they want to be involved in some way. And since these are open and public meetings, everybody can attend and, you know, will have opportunities for people to speak. So I think that's really exciting and really, really positive. We're looking for folks that have some background in doing some of this work and who can give us, you know, insight and knowledge. So that's part of it, too. And I'm just mainly really over the moon with the candidates that we have. Everybody is outstanding. And so, you know, there's nobody that's not qualified for this committee, based on what I've seen, not a single person. So it's going to be, it's a really exciting time, I think, for Tuxbury right now. So I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one other add-on to that, because I think it's really important in our experience with all kinds of committees, right, across the board in the town. And that's really about the ability to bring to the table willingness and open-mindedness to work with others in a group setting, right? You have to be able to compromise or work through issues with, you know, five, ten people. And if you don't have that flexibility or DNA, then it makes it a lot more difficult. So it's a group setting, and you have to be willing to work in that environment. So I think that's a critical component. We're all wired differently, made up differently, and think differently. But there's, you know, a lot of strength in having difference of opinion. But how you manage that in a group context is critical. So reasonableness and flexibility and willingness to hear others, I think, is critical.
I would concur.
Okay, very good. All right, Merlin, thank you very much. Very, very well done. All right, well, looking at the next seven, ten, we have Beth McFadden. So why don't we start off with Ms. Tronick?
Thank you so much. I was able to review your information. But if you would like to tell us a little bit about yourself, your experience, and what you think you could be bringing would be to this committee would be great. Thank you, Beth.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. So I've been in Tuxbury now for twenty-six years. I grew up in Wilmington. My mom actually grew up in Tuxbury and is part of a very large family here in town. I think that about seventeen of my first cousins grew up in Tuxbury. Ten of them are still here. So I can't get in and out of market basket without bumping into someone. And my family has been really wonderful in serving the town in different capacities, some very formal ones and some voluntary ones. And I have that itch as well to serve. I think I come to this committee more, though, because of the fact that I am the mother of a multiracial family. I have children through both birth and adoption. My oldest identifies herself as Latinx. She has, she's about fifty percent Mexican and fifty percent Native American. Her birth mother grew up on the Morongo Reservation out in California. And my youngest son was born in Guatemala. So he is one hundred percent indigenous Mayan, which it's very hard in Tuxbury to find anyone who is one hundred percent of anything. So it is really such a privilege to be mom to this family. And, you know, growing up in a town like Wilmington and now being here in Tuxbury, there hasn't been the kind of diversity that I had hoped for for my family. I would like to be part of this committee because I feel like I've noticed as a parent, not as a person with a diverse background myself, but as a parent, that there's an opportunity to help people to feel more welcome, to feel more valued, to feel more included. So I'm very interested in being part of that.
Thank you so much. That was very helpful. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. How about, how about Ms. Wellman?
Well, Beth, I will ask you the obvious question. Do you know about open meeting law?
Well, I haven't served in any official capacity in town, so I need to watch that video and become more familiar with it, of course. But I fully understand about the importance of transparency and making sure that the community trusts the work that we do and make sure that all of the conversations and content are public and open for people to be able to participate in.
I also wanted to tack on to your last question. If you could just take a moment and talk a little bit about the work you've done with Mayan families, because there's a lot of work that you've done there.
Awesome, thanks. So I have a background in training and organization development. I got my master's years ago and have been able to put that work, that knowledge to use, either through platform skills, delivering training, or needs assessments, opinion surveys, actually developing and designing training. So I have a love for that, for sure. I've taken some of that and applied it to a nonprofit organization that's near and dear to my heart. We've been supporting a nonprofit in Guatemala for thirteen or fourteen years now. I just recently finished board service as chair of Board of Directors. And I realized in the few years that I was in leadership there that I had still so much more to learn. It gave me such a keen awareness of the importance of human rights, of the importance of treating people with dignity. Guatemala is a pretty unique place. There has been civil war there as early as, you know, just thirty years ago. The indigenous people and the Latina people have a lot of difficulty. And there has been just a lot of need for the indigenous folks represented by my son, too, to have their rights be represented. So I have a true appreciation for that. And I also have a very big passion for building community within Tuxbury. I've served in leadership roles at the Congregational Church. I have run the Tuxbury Zero Waste Day program for ten years. Done a lot of behind-the-scenes work for other nonprofits in the local area as well. So having the chance to build community would be great. And Merlin and I can be study buddies, because I'm actually going back to school in September as well. I'm going to be at Tufts University in a master's program in humanitarian assistance. It's a one-year program that I'm super excited about, because there were so many things that I still have to learn as a fifty-something-year-old. I'm really excited about the opportunity to learn more.
Thank you very much.
Very nice. How about, how about Mr. Johnson for the final one?
All right, I'm going to try to remember the question. So, no, I know, I know, I know. So talk to us a little bit about the time commitment, Beth, in terms of, I mean, you and Merlin are going to go back to school, which is a huge responsibility. And clearly, you have, you know, a lot of family in your life and family commitment. So how do you anticipate balancing all that with, you know, nighttime meetings and the activity that might be required here?
So I do have four kids, but they're nearly grown and flown. I just had one graduate last week. I have one more who's a senior in high school. So, and I'm not working outside of the home. So my primary responsibility come September will be full-time school during the daytime. So I do believe that I will have evenings and weekends and lots of other tidbits of time to dedicate to things that are really important to me, and this definitely qualifies as that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Beth, any questions, Beth, for the board?
I guess the only thing that I'd like to add, especially hearing now that there are sixteen candidates for a number, a lesser number of seats, is that I really believe that probably, you know, we all obviously can bring gifts to this committee, but I really, I urge the select board to really strongly consider candidates who have a voice, candidates who are represented by the dimensions of difference and diversity. I think that that voice is really important to this work. And I, too, would be someone who would be very pleased to support either being on the committee or being on the sidelines. It's really important that the composition of the committee is right. That's the most important thing to me.
Perfect. Thank you, Beth. Well said. Well said. Okay, one, we're going to move to our next candidate. And I think it's, believe it's Mason Dunn.
Hello, good evening.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for, thank you for applying. Why don't we start with Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will ask, again, we'll start off with the question about what your experience is and what you hope to bring to the committee. And I think you've heard pretty much the question, so I'll leave it at that.
I feel like I can recite the questions already, but, you know, there's something nice about that, so.
Hang in, Mason. I might need you. Hang in.
It's all good. I got you. I got you. So my name is Mason. I use here-they pronouns. I am a transgender, non-binary organizer, advocate, and attorney by training. I graduated from UNH Law about ten, ten years ago, about that. So I professionally currently serve as the deputy director for the Division of Education and Training at the Fenway Institute, under which I manage the National LGBTQIA+ Health Education Center, which is a national training and technical assistance program for federally qualified health centers and beyond on the topic of LGBTQIA+ healthcare. In addition to that, I also serve on the Board of Directors for the Equality Federation, and I serve on the Massachusetts Commission for LGBTQ Youth at the moment. And in copious spare time, although it's surprisingly good amount of spare time, I also teach LGBTQ history and media at UNH Manchester, up in Manchester, New Hampshire. Before that, I am the former executive director of the Massachusetts Transgender Political Coalition, during which time I served as co-chair for the Yes on Three campaign in 2018, the successful Yes on Three campaign of 2018 for transgender rights. That actually was the first ever statewide vote on transgender rights in the country that we won, and very proud of that. On the personal level, I moved to Tuxbury two years ago, so I'm a bit of a new resident, first-time homebuyer with my spouse Lauren. Really excited that our first home and hopefully our forever home really is in Tuxbury. We're proud to be here. My wife actually is an American Sign Language interpreter. We have a lot of roots and connections within the deaf community across the state as well. And in general, we're a very proudly queer, proud Jewish home. And that also includes our twenty-pound cat Rufus and our three-legged dog Harvey. So that's about me.
Okay, I think I want to meet Harvey. Thank you so much.
Very good. How about Ms. Wellman?
I'm going to ask you if you know about open meeting law, but I wanted to ask you to tell us a little bit about what you want to do on the DEI Advisory Committee. You gave us your background, but I want to hear a little bit about the other part.
Yeah, sure. So yes, very well acquainted with open meeting law, because I serve on a state commission with the LGBTQ Youth Commission. Also, having been a lobbyist, no longer lobbyist, but was a lobbyist for transgender rights in the state, I have absolutely familiarity with it and have also taken minutes for open meeting purposes, so very familiar with that. And what I want to do, you know, the area that I focus on is obviously LGBTQIA+ identities, gender identity, sexual orientation, gender expression, is what I have been doing for about fifteen years now, specifically educating on inclusion for LGBTQIA+ communities. I've been doing that for many years. It is my passion as well as my career. Would love to chat about any kind of educational opportunities, whether it's, you know, as a member of the committee or not, would love to talk about how we can open awareness for particularly transgender and gender diverse individuals like myself living in Tuxbury.
Thank you very much.
All right, for the final one, I want to pass it to Mr. Johnson.
All right, it's my cue again. All right, Mason, talk to us about time commitments, right? I know you know the question, but.
I got it.
Tell us about, can you fit it into, can you fit it into your schedule, and do you see any problems with that?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I always knew that when I bought my first home, whatever community I ended up in, I wanted to make it a priority to do what I could to bring my expertise and my experience and my work into my community. So it is a priority for me. I do serve on a national board and the Youth Commission. However, my term on all of those are tapering off in the next couple of years, so I'll have even more time. And so I absolutely want to make this a priority in a time way and so many other ways. I want to make this a priority in my life.
Excellent. Thanks for your commitment to it.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mason. Hey, Mason, any questions for the, any questions for the board, Mason?
You know, I think what I, the thing that has been percolating for me is what does, what do you envision as a ideal event or something like that? What is, what are you bringing to the committee that you think really would showcase what you want the committee to do? Any ideas percolating or out there?
Ms. Wellman?
Sure. Anne Marie, did you want to go?
Nope, you can go first, Jane.
So I think the first year, the intention of the committee is to work on education, outreach, engagement, those kinds of things for the town of Tuxbury, for the residents and the businesses and so forth. What I think the first year is going to be, it will be listening to what's happening in the community, assessing what we want to focus on for educational. And we can go broad or we can go deep. So maybe going broad initially and kind of bringing some high-level trainings, like some of the trainings I know that you do, and then, and speakers and things like that. And then maybe going deep in the future. And then also offering events, offering opportunities to celebrate our differences. We've heard ideas from other candidates, like different cultural opportunities with food trucks and music and arts. And so, you know, maybe incorporating the arts in some way into the activity. So I think there's no pre-described set of agendas or expectations, except to be open and listening and engaging everybody as best we can in a supportive environment. This isn't like a Human Rights Commission kind of thing. There isn't cases or stuff like that. This is meant to be educational and engaging. And so, and I'm looking for candidates who know a lot about what that is all about. And I see your thumbs up. That's awesome. I should use that more. So, thank you.
It's the joys of doing online education. You start to learn all the little ins and outs of what you can react to.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And as you can tell, you know, Ms. Wellman has brought this forward. So even as a board, we're very interested as a community, even as a board, I'm very interested in learning and seeing what the committee can evolve into. So you can probably tell, you know, that's why we kind of defer to Ms. Wellman, but she's so passionate about it. So, all right, good stuff, good stuff. All right, moving just along, I think we have a few more. Andrew is next. Andrew is next. Andrew, thank you for joining. So why don't we, we're going to change the bed order. How about Mr. Johnson?
All right, I get to ask a different question. So Andrew, just tell us a little bit about yourself and specifically, you know, why are you interested in this particular committee and in our community?
Yeah, absolutely. So my name's Andrew Volpe. I'm a relative newcomer to Tuxbury. I've only lived here for about three years, but I grew up right next door in Wilmington. And I went to school up in UMass Lowell, so I've always been in the neighborhood, so to speak. I work in IT on Hanscom down in Lexington. In terms of experience relating to diversity, as an undergrad at UMass Lowell, I was very active in the Pride Alliance Club, which is a group for LGBTQ students. And in my senior year, I served as the treasurer for the club. So some of the things Um, so some of the things that I was doing was putting together, um, events for the student body, for outreach, uh, education, um, elevating voices, um, that's, that sort of thing. I think we had a lot of, uh, great success, um, educating people on LGBTQ issues and providing a safe and inclusive atmosphere, uh, for people who, uh, in many cases Bristol, uh, coming to terms, uh, with their identity. Um, you know, college is, uh, you know, kind of, kind of, uh, a, a great, um, age group to, um, lay down the foundation of educating people. Um, I also serve as a board member, uh, for the Homeowners Association in my neighborhood, DePamela Estates. I'm the webmaster and the secretary on that board. I've been doing that for about a year and a half now. Um, and then, so kind of like personally, uh, so I identify as a gay man. I have a lovely husband who is a immigrant from China. Um, he just came to the US about five years ago. So we're actually, um, you know, he's still going through the immigration process, the green card, the whole thing like that. Um, and this kind of opened my eyes to, uh, the, those sorts of issues, um, you know, being an immigrant and, uh, integrating, uh, in America. Um, so LGBTQ immigrant, uh, racial minority issues are kind of, uh, in the front of my mind. Um, because that's the life of, the life experience of myself and, um, you know, the people around me.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for sharing that. And I do want to note that it's, it's nice to see we're, um, recruiting all these former Wilmingtonites to move into Tewksbury. So I, I think that speaks well of Tewksbury. Thank you.
All right, good. How about, how about Ms. Tronick?
Um, thank you. I will ask the question about your time. Um, obviously you hadn't tapped into that in terms of what your evenings and potentially your weekends, if there are events on the weekends. So what would that look like for you, Andrew?
Yeah, so I just work a regular nine-to-five. Uh, the only thing I have, um, after hours, uh, the, my HOA board meets on the first Tuesday of every month, uh, in the evening. Um, the other twenty-nine or thirty days, uh, of the month, I'd be free on the evenings.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, good. How about, uh, Ms. Wellman to close up?
Right. Um, well, I wanted to ask you, um, what you'd like to do with the, uh, what you'd like to see happen with the DEI, how you'd like to be involved in that. Um, and then considering your, your background, um, and then if you, um, can tell us if you know about open meeting law.
Sure. Um, so I think the, the, the two things that I would, uh, be most interested in accomplishing would be, um, definitely education. Um, that is, uh, something, you know, that I've had experience with. And, um, I think that's one of the, the best, um, the best things that, that we can do. Um, but also elevating, uh, underrepresented voices, uh, of all stripes. I know that Tewksbury, you know, has, has many different kinds of people. Um, and I think that the board could, uh, facilitate, you know, messaging and dialogue to kind of elevate the voices to, uh, showcase the, the diversity of our town. Uh, in terms of the open meeting law, I am somewhat familiar with it. I read up on it. Um, I know even like there's, there's been discussion about, um, uh, because I know that, uh, um, like in-person meetings, you know, had been allowed to, to be suspended. I know, I, I remember seeing in the news that, um, some, some changing of the laws to try to, you know, allow in-person meetings again. Um, so somewhat familiar with that. I've read in it, I've read up on it. Um, but I think it's a different thing to, to actually do it.
Thank you. The most important thing with open meeting law is to make sure that all of the discussion and the work and the deliberation of the committee happens in the public, in the public eye, in the public meeting. Um, so that those conversations don't happen on Facebook, they don't happen. Um, you, you don't call everybody on the committee to kind of poll how they feel about something. All of that discussion has to happen in that public meeting. And so it's a little bit of a different thing. And you, there is training for it on, on the state websites. And everybody who is selected will be pointed to an ethics training you have to take at the state level and all this kind of stuff. So there's, there's plenty of, plenty of training to be done and lots of resources to help. Um, it's just something like, I think my colleagues have all mentioned it. We always like to mention it and, and make people aware of it because it's something that we work very hard to maintain as a committee and all our boards and committees do. And there's expectations that go along with it and law. So, um, so anyway, thank you very much for your application and all your information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andrew. Any, uh, any questions for the board, for the board, Andrew?
I do not have any questions at this time. Nope. Um, I just wanted to, to kind of note my, uh, the happiness that I felt when I, when I saw that this was going to be a thing. I think, um, um, you know, this is a great, uh, a great thing that the town is doing. Um, so I, I, I applaud the, the selectmen for, for doing this.
Okay. We're gonna have some closing statements again because it's, we feel the same. So, okay, yeah, I think we're almost there. Um, Angela, last but not least, Angela. So why don't we start with, um, how about Ms. Tronick?
Okay, thank you. Um, welcome Angela. Um, we're so happy to have you here and thank you for being so patient. Um, I'm going to ask you about your experience and what you hope to accomplish on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee.
Hi, I'm Angela Crane. Um, I moved to Tewksbury, uh, in two thousand and nine. Um, however, I was living in New Hampshire twenty years and I'm originally from Mexico. Um, in the late nineteen eighties, uh, nine to mid nineteen ninety-five, I, I also lived in Tewksbury, uh, before moving to New Hampshire. Um, and I worked, uh, as an ER physician at Lawrence General Hospital. And to understand Lawrence General Hospital, you know that it's a very diverse community. Um, and over Lawrence, um, and, um, many patients don't speak English. Um, and, uh, just being an ER physician, I had to, you know, I interact, had to engage people from different walks of life, um, different age groups, uh, different, um, different cultures, um, different classes, um, education level, et cetera. Um, and it was then that I, I, I started to appreciate, um, cultural differences and that if you don't, um, understand cultural differences, it's, it's, it's really hard to, to meet a person where they are or to understand where people are coming from or to really collaborate with people. And so, you know, I, 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 I started to become more involved in culture. Um, in two thousand and twelve, I actually, in two thousand and eleven, actually, I went back to school. Um, yeah, and for a public Harvard. And, um, you know, while there was diversity, um, you know, there were pockets of people from all over the world. They weren't communicating with each other. And so I, uh, started a workshop, co-created a workshop with the staff and faculty. And it was so successful that the school, um, you know, adopted it. Um, I, I think that being a black woman, you know, with, um, uh, biracial kids, I also have personal, uh, experience. Um, without understanding culture, it's hard to really get diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so what I'd like to see is, um, you know, just more work, you know, in education, particularly what we teach in school and also in healthcare, um, where I think, you know, there is such a disparity.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. How about, uh, Mr. Johnson?
Sure. Thank you. Um, I'll ask, uh, I guess the easiest question of the three is, is familiarity with the open meeting law or just in general, like sort of a, an awareness of the obligation, right? So you've heard some discussion tonight, I'm sure, doctors. So, um, you know, just, you, you, you get the gist, right? And, um, you, you're committed to that. I assume. Is that fair to say?
Before I am aware now, um, there's sunshine laws and I'm familiar with them.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and you know, it's, um, I will say this, um, just as commentary. Um, you know, we, we've had, I, we can't count the number of committees over the years. You know, if you think back, uh, you know, in the last fifty years, right? There's been, uh, you know, a number of committees for very many different purposes and very many citizens of Tewksbury, residents of Tewksbury have participated in those committees. And for the most part, stuff gets done well. Um, but every now and then, a committee or committee member, you know, kind of falls off the road a little bit. And, and then it creates a huge issue for the committee, the product or the principle, you know, the mission of the committee gets undermined because the public confidence is lost. And, you know, this is such an important topic in the area that, you know, clearly you're all enthusiastic for that, you know, the awareness of what is a public requirement. It really doesn't have a lot to do with the mission of this particular committee, but, um, it, it has importance in the sense that it may, if it's not adhered to, it can destroy the, the promise of a committee like this. So, you know, it's, it's, that's why we're asking about it because we want to make sure, you know, whoever is on the committee is, is fully, um, committed to adhering to that. So I, I respect, I know all of you have answered that question and it's kind of a silly question to ask on the surface, but in reality, it can destroy everything that, um, is intended if it's not adhered to. So I want to thank you for that, all of you. I, I appreciate the concern for it. Mr. Chairman, that's it for me.
Okay. And how about Ms. Wellman to close it out?
Hi Angela, thank you so much for applying and being here with us this evening. I just wanted to ask you about your time availability. And one thing I don't think I've said, and I'm glad all of our candidates are on the call still, we anticipate that we'll be meeting once a month, one evening per month. Um, and then as we get going, there will be some events that we do, um, and there may be some interim kind of things where we're trying to munch data or whatever. So we'll see, we'll see how it goes, but generally we anticipate meeting at least once per month. With the occasional month, there may not be a meeting if it gets really busy sometimes during the winter holidays, for example. Um, so tell us a little bit about, um, if you think you can meet that sort of a timeline.
Oh, that's true. That won't be a problem. Um, I'm retired. Um, my kids are all grown. Um, I have a grandson, um, who I, you know, uh, see on a regular basis, but, uh, I, I am looking forward to being on the committee because I think it's so important. Um, you know, that, um, we increase awareness of these issues.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, perfect. Angela, any questions?
Yes, I do. I, I was curious as to how this committee came about, given that Tewksbury, you know, is predominantly a white community. I, I wondered how did, um, the committee, the idea come about?
Um, so I'll, I'll take that, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, uh, I presented this idea, a very incomplete idea to the board, um, in August of last year. Um, kind of floated that balloon and, um, got some great feedback and began kind of digging in to create, um, a model that we could work with. So, um, part of it was, I have a daughter who's graduating high school this year. And so, um, I have, um, I have a family that has a diverse background. We have, um, Latinx, I have African-American, I have, um, Asian relatives, um, immigrants and, and, um, descendants. So I have, um, I have members of the LGBTQ community, all in my family. And we had some interesting experiences, uh, in our state, in our nation, and conversations last year around, as everybody knows, around our race and culture. And so it's something that I see in my family, so I wanted to, um, and, and conversations we have in the community, conversations with our youth, um, in my household. So I brought the idea forward and then this committee, um, worked diligently to work through, uh, how it would be structured, what would be the mission, what would be the goals? How would we do it? Um, the town manager was very involved. We have a lot of support from, um, town staff, including our police department, um, our HR department. Um, so there's a lot of enthusiasm in, in town government for this, uh, for this committee to come forward. Um, and the, the board did a lot of work. We incorporated the, um, the feedback and conversations from every board member in the development of the, um, the description that's online. Um, and, um, that's kind of, that's kind of how we got to where we are today. So it's, we've taken some time. This was not rushed. Um, it was done, you know, with thought and feeling. We brought it to town council, so it had been vetted through our legal, um, advisory. So, um, we, we've put a lot of thought into it and then brought it to, um, the public to begin doing the work where we are right now. I hope that answers your question.
Yep, I think Angela just fell off. She might be back.
Yeah.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to work on our questions because, um, there, there were a lot of softball questions tonight. We were too easy on this fine card.
Well, well, with all fairness, it's weird. I got some questions during the last meeting. We can, we can honestly say typically we do these in person and when we schedule them, you know, folks on in the room or they come in waves or certain time slots. But, and again, you, I want, we started this off, we wanted to be very friendly, very open. And remember, we're all residents and we volunteer. So, you know, no one's here to, uh, nice and easy. So maybe we'll change a few up or add one, but, um, I do have some parting comments, but I'd like to open up to the board. I'm just very, I want to say a few things before we close. And just for the applicants, so our plan is to meet at a later date, the select board. Um, and pretty much what we do is we review, um, the, I always say the good, bad, and indifferent. And then we seek motions to appoint folks on the committee. So I don't have a particular date yet because typically what we do is at the end of July, probably the next two or three weeks, uh, June, I'm sorry, June, that's when we do all kind of our, we call it a bulk appointments for all the different boards and committees. So probably within the next three weeks, sometimes it does bleed into July, but very, very soon, uh, you will be noticed, um, uh, notified if you do make the committee. So stay tuned. And again, whenever we publish our agenda, you'll know when we're going to talk about the boards and the committee's appointments. So, um, before we conclude, I'll just, maybe just a quick roundtable, I want to share a few comments. Is, I don't know if any of the board, uh, the, the board members want to share a few comments or I can close?
Mr. Chairman, I finally am closing, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Wellman said earlier, I just want to say sixteen applicants, sixteen applicants, that's a record, a record for any boarding committee. So I just want to say, I'm just, uh, I always say, you, you tell my kids, you, you don't need a title to be a leader. So I think, um, Ms. Wellman, keep me honest, I think we have seven, seven openings for residents. Is that accurate, seven?
I think so. Don't hold me to it. I have to look.
We'll have to check. I mean, I'm, I'm even considering maybe, uh, okay. But, but all I want to say is I just am so impressed with the incredibly qualified candidates and the, the passion and energy and positivity is wonderful. And I just really can't thank the applicants enough. You guys have been so tremendous. Um, and it's so nice to see that we have so many residents that came forth for this committee. So that's really what I wanted to say in a positive to close. And I don't know if any other board members, if we're good to adjourn or if anyone wants any final, um, any final comments.
No, just I want to thank, thank, uh, thank, uh, six or seven people we spoke with tonight. I appreciate that. And, um, if for some reason at the end of this process, um, you're not one of those seven, right? Um, my parting words would be, uh, one is, um, follow the committee, participate, you know, maybe as an. Follow the committee, participate, you know, maybe as an observer. Because we're going to go back to in-person meetings. So you can still bring your opinion and your commitment to the table. And number two, this isn't the one and only committee in Tewksbury, right? We have many, many, many other opportunities. Some of you have indicated you, you moved to town in the last few years or so. We always are looking for good people to serve on committees. So there's all kinds of opportunities. So. Stay involved one way or the other. And thank you again for your interest.
Thank you.
And that's a credit to all applicants for staying on as well. Just, just, just wonderful. So thanks again. Awesome, awesome job. All right. With that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion second by Ms. Wellman. Because this is a virtual meeting, we have to do a roll call vote. So Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Dronik?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right. Thanks again. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you all.
Everybody.
Thank you all.